Good to see a good crowd. Tonight's another committee meeting to discuss the sales tax. As you know, the possibility of a sales tax was discussed last week by the chamber. Last week was about the landscape. Tonight is more detail about the projects themselves. Afterwards, the council asked questions about the projects, followed by some accounting questions by Mr. Winningham. We will open up Mr. Gates, bringing more information of the council. And we, we will open the floor again to the public for short comment. With that, for those of you that'd like to join us, please feel free to join us for prayer and praise of allegiance.
Praise you.
Praise you.
You were valid. We bow humbly before your presence, oh Lord.
Allegiance to the prior states here, to the republic which is saints, one nation under God, indivisible,天地 justice for all.
Mr. Gates, you're up. All right, well, good evening, council. We're back, back again for another, another bite at the apple. Have some information to share for you and we'll do a little bit of a, there you go. So as with any sequel, there are, there are challenges. You know, they seldom live up to the, the first presentation from two weeks ago. We will try to keep it interesting. We will also do a substantial amount of recap, just like any good series or sequel. So if we do this again, we may need one of those little skip intro buttons like calling Euroco or Netflix. But I do encourage just anyone who's watching this online, we did a presentation two weeks ago where we talked about a lot of this material. I will be referencing that, but I'll also be covering some of it again, because some of us are, you know, twice isn't too many times to talk about this. But again, I do encourage you to have full context, watch that first presentation. So just quickly, the review, the column on the left, the comparison of how Conway's local sales tax compared to peers and the collection trends, all those things are not really what we're focusing on tonight. Bulk of that was covered, had to do with the brick and mortar landscape within our region, the addition of new stores and neighboring communities, how we are transitioning to more and more e-commerce. And if you happen to reside very close to, very, very close to, but not inside the city limits, as that percentage of spending takes place online, that is eroding at the tax base for the city of Conway, which is how we mainly pay for our, our things, our services, our salaries, our streets, all of that stuff. We're going to spend tonight talking about the qualitative, the outcomes, particularly the second two points, some projects and programs that grow the tax base. And all of this resting on the premise that funding essential services and infrastructure is where you start as a city, not where you stop. That is the stuff that every city is supposed to do. That's a sign of health. That's not a sign of thriving or excellence. And, you know, we've said, we don't tolerate stopping at the essentials in the workplace when we send our kids to school, from our coworkers, from our teammates, anything like that. So those are one of the assumptions and we're going to spend our time on this right-hand column. Going to review this chart, you'll see it, saw it last time, see it more right now. Top 20 largest cities in Conway. This is our local sales tax rate, city and county. And the reason county is relevant for many cities in Arkansas, they receive a pro-rata share of the county sales tax. I will touch on that later, but it is, it is a big difference. It is not something that takes place in Faulkner County, because it is a lower sales tax and it's dedicated to public safety. Those aren't the only taxes you pay as a resident. We also look at property taxes. And so notice here that to the previous slide, Little Rock had a lower sales tax, but their local property taxes are 400% higher than Conway's, which results as a property taxpayer to something more like 40 or 50% higher on your home. And so that's another way they're closing that gap. When you consider property taxes, we're 17th out of those top 20. So our sales tax economy, the thing that we use to do the lion's share of the work within city government, it's our rate, it's our base. The rate, you saw the chart, this is how much we charge. The base is who pays? That's the trade area, the people in and out of here every day, either living, working, passing through, and then visitors, people coming here for some purpose. What has changed? Where they pay can change. A trade area, they could choose to shop somewhere else. Someone in Cersei may be shopping at their new Academy Sports, or they can shop at Target. Changes are happening in Russellville as well. Also, visitors can choose to spend their money somewhere else, and that's where some of this disruption is taking place. This isn't just a, a math question, this isn't a shareholder return numbers only argument. There is an element of, you know, what's the, what's kind of the proper role of city government? What's the history? Tell us about Conway. You know, money in, money out, you trade that money for services. But, so I didn't want to skip past, you know, why even bother with this? I think a lot of people, when they view a city kind of qualitatively, what the city feels like, what the city looks like, they think it's kind of like the weather. You know, well, it's my city, there's not a lot to do, but you know, that's just kind of how my city is, or my city looks this kind of way, and that's just how it is. And if I wanted, you know, a different city, I would move there. Just like, well, in the summer, it's hot and humid, and in the winter, we'll have a nice storm and we have severe weather. But I would say that that is not the way cities work. The way a city feels is not something you don't have control over like the weather. It's a lot more like a home. And so we can choose to renovate, we can remodel, we can create value when we do that. If you don't do it, you're going to be in the position of marketing a city with shag carpet and a popcorn ceiling, and that's not always where you want to be in the market. And so we can do things that create value, create opportunity, but also that we just enjoy living in. And so I do think a lot of people, because it takes place over time, don't realize the decisions we make can happen and really change the way our city is. You don't have to move to find something different. You can bring the things that you want to the table. So sticking with our cable TV theme, we'll just do a quick history lesson to show, in Conway, we have 150-year history of being intentional about growth and quality. We started out recruiting residents from abroad, taking ads in newspapers in Europe, telling people to move here, got on horses, rode out to the far reaches and said, hey, come use the gin in downtown Conway. Went out and recruited colleges, one at a time. In the midst of a depression, decided to create a utility. I think the statute of limitations has probably passed on that. It was a quasi-legal scheme to create a utility during the depression, and we've all benefited from that. We've gone and recruited manufacturers, we built two lakes, they weren't here until we decided to build them. We've led on municipal, public policy, we have never been passive. So I would say, why bother? Is it appropriate to do these things? Well, there's 150-year history, call it tradition, call it DNA. It would be a change in the nature of Conway to be passive, to not intentionally try to be about growth and quality. Also, we have the capacity to do something, just going back to this chart, the space between this 2.25 and then the median tax rate represents capacity. And that capacity is what we're going to speak from tonight. We're going to talk about what would it look like if we collected the way a plurality of the cities of our size collect? So if we picked the most popular local tax rate and did that, what would it look like? What would city finances and what would, what would the city look and feel like? What would that remodeled home feel like? Talked about this last week. I'm not going to spend much time talking about these funds, because honestly, you, your department heads and your employees are the subject matter experts here, but it is no secret that public safety capital, the rising cost even availability of firefighting apparatus, the increased cost of police cruisers, including the technology, it's something that is difficult to budget for, and they are absolute essentials, and they absolutely compete with the resources available to pay all of your city employees. And so we could create a public safety capital fund, a street maintenance fund. For five years, we, we had one of these. It rolled off the books about two years ago to many peoples, without many people noticing that they were paying less. And we talked about last presentation, you are not saving money when you defer maintenance on streets. You may be collecting less taxes, and you may be spending less money, but you are not saving money. You are almost definitely costing yourself money in the long run. And then finally, an infrastructure fund. And the reason I do have an asterisk on here, these first two funds really are about the essential capital needs of the city. And there's not really a promise of growth, growing our tax base there. But I do think with the infrastructure fund, there is the opportunity to create growth that could be job creating infrastructure. So we have been very fortunate with our timing, that when manufacturers have needed infrastructure, Conway Corp. has had the capacity to swallow that financing. They're frequently paid back, but it's how much money is available at any time to get that deal done. And honestly, with the rise of e-commerce, I can imagine a scenario where facilitating residential development means increased sales tax. Households are now the point of sale for a growing part of our retail economy. So just mentally, we're going to move on from the funds, but just hold on to that idea, three-eighths of a penny to protect, pave and prepare. Call the funds whatever you want, but that's what, that's what that money could do. So what would it look like if we put those three funds into place? We were handling our public safety capital, we had a real street maintenance fund, and we also had a fund for job creating infrastructure, infrastructure to facilitate continued growth. The chart would go from this to this. Hold on to your hats, I'll make sure that y'all saw that. It's a, not a real paradigm shift, that's what the new chart would look like, if you're doing those three things. However, rate is part of the equation. Funding essential services and infrastructure, it's where you start, not where you start, or not where you stop. So all of those three things have not really spoken to the base. There'll be very little to address the tax landscape issues that we talked about last time. We can charge a higher rate, but if we continue to lose the shopper and the transaction itself, you'll be in the position of needing to charge an even higher rate, just to hold your ground. But what we want to talk about now is how do we grow that base? So we're moving to another three-eighths of a cent for the purpose of these assumptions. Three-eighths of a cent will finance approximately $100 million in proceeds, under the terms of 30-year and 4.5%, that is as good as an estimate of the current tax-exempt bond lending climate as we have right now. The projects that we're going to discuss tonight are designed to attract visitors, which grows the base. They will have zero net impact, they're designed to have zero net impact on the general fund expenses, they're not going to land on the general fund operations. So we're not talking about increasing, building these things, and then growing our headcount and payroll within city government. And they're aligned with community surveys and strategic plans. If we're going to do these things, we should do the things that the community has said that they support and that they want. And the community has provided clear direction. The citizen survey, distributed by the city of Conway in 2020, the, these questions are asked differently, but they've come to the same conclusion. Which area within the city are you least satisfied with? This is in the city of Conway survey, cultural, arts, music activities. It had the lowest level of satisfaction. When we did the strategic plan facilitated by Rockefeller Institute, what is the highest priority sector for strategic planning? Arts, entertainment and culture. So I would say, believe the people when you ask them. And so we had over 1,800 respondents on that 2035 survey, and then another several hundred people who continued to work through the planning process. So here's the projects again, those are the terms, and we're going to focus on four. This is less than, there are more projects that I touched on in the previous presentation. These are projects that we have already accomplished, a lot of work, there's been some design work, some planning work, they're further along, and they're also the projects that are most visitor and tax base oriented. So here's some of the work that's already been done, and these are support materials that either we have partnered on with the city, or one of the organizations within our building has, has paid for, commissioned. So for the Central Arkansas Music Pavilion, we'll be referencing an economic impact study from 2022. The Lake Conway North Shore Boardwalk is something that we partnered with this body, city government, on the master plan, that's by Ecological Design Group. The Grand Theater, we've got architectural plans from DLR Group, who's the leader in kind of historic theater restoration, they're also included in the economic impact study from Johnson Consulting. And finally, the convention center, where we have an impact study from Johnson Consulting. So what we're calling the Camp Central Arkansas Music Pavilion, 35 million construction costs, 12,000 capacity covered in lawn. When we hit that metric on not landing on the general expenses and for the city, this will be operated by a qualified third party. And there's nationwide, a number of, of models, but it is essential to have someone, not only to kind of segregate those operations from the general expenses of the city, but also to have expertise. I mean, this is obviously a, a niche field, and we know that we can find that qualified third party. I mean, this is obviously a, a niche field and we know that we can find that qualified third party to do the work. One way it's going to qualitatively change our economy, midweek visitor opportunities. I would wager that there has never been a wait at multiple restaurants in Conway on a Tuesday or Thursday evening. When this opens, that will happen. And that may be bad news to some of you who, who have to wait a little longer for dinner. But I assure you, it's good news to every restaurant owner. It's good news for the local economy. The opportunity to put some of our hospitality businesses into a busy position on days other than Friday and Saturday when the sun is shining is, is very welcome. From the economic impact study, year one, we're estimating more than 200,000 visitors. That assumes 24 promoted shows. When I say promoted show, that is kind of what you think it is. It's that concert you heard about at the amp. It's the type of show that you've seen at Simmons. I know most of you probably don't drive up to the amp to go to concerts, certainly not on a weeknight. Some of you may be a wayward son going to see Kansas or 38 special. But maybe had free tickets and didn't spend any money while you were up there. But $26 million in direct spending. Again, this is the most conservative view on the economic impact. That is direct spending associated with the event at that site. For all of these, if you want to get into the economic impact study and talk about indirect or induced spending, which is kind of one more degree further each time, you could increase it by 40%. But the thing that you can't argue with is, is the direct spending. So if you do 24 shows at kind of the assumptions on capacity and attendance, this is what you're going to end up with. And then in year seven, we're at 350,000 visitors with 32 promoted shows and $44 million in direct spending. The reason this goes up is we can't be sure when this would open with regard to a concert season. And so you don't want to assume 32 shows in year one if you open partway through your, your concert season. The next one is the Lake Conway North Shore Boardwalk. We've got a phase one construction of 10 million. Again, this is the master plan that we partnered with the city of Conway on developing with Ecological Design Group. The key features of this phase are a boardwalk, water trails, shaded structures. We've worked with some of these programming partners below to come up with an estimate on visitors. These are the experts in the field. These aren't made up numbers. That 50,000 visitors per year is a conservative number on people who will visit this once it's built out. Again, the model to protect city budget from growing operational costs is to partner with Arkansas Game and Fish, Arkansas Office of Outdoor Recreation, Arkansas Parks and Tourism. If you've paid attention to those three organizations, from the direction of the current administration, the goal is to double Arkansas's outdoor recreation economy. This facility will be a focal point of that strategy. I'm going to orient everybody to the area that we're talking about and why it makes sense for it to be a focal point. The northwest corner up there in the, the center top panel, we're doing the Hollywood squares. That is the Dave Ward Drive exit. So if you move to that kind of crosshairs, you see Sam's Club, Academy Sports. And then obviously the developed area is the southeast corner, developed in green. Kind of the spaghetti monster of lines would be a variety of trails, soft surface, boardwalk, paved, a variety of uses. But you see Interstate 40. I mean, you want to talk about an amenity and an asset that has been hiding in plain sight for generations. Currently, when people drive through Conway and they see Lake Conway, maybe they feel some kind of way. But I know if this happens and they see it built out, again, to, you know, this type of quality, you see people kayaking, paddle boarding, you see public use amenities. It's going to be a different kind of asset. And again, we have the best partners you could hope for if you want to get into this outdoor recreation economy. That is a clear emphasis for the state of Arkansas. This is, this is that example of skating to where the puck is going. Next up is the Grand Theater, $8 million construction renovation budget. This is on, this is on Oak Street. You may not, many of you may have been driving by this for years. So it's across the street from the, the EM building. Caddy corner from the old Massey Hardware. It's on Chestnut and Oak. It was built as a theater. It was built as a live performance theater, which is a unique opportunity that we have that a lot of places who have restored movie theater houses do not have. This would be a 320 seat live performance venue. Again, there are a number of operating models possible. We have worked very closely with the Franklin Theater in Franklin, Tennessee. They operate under a model of a nonprofit. There's also the opportunity to, similar to what you have at the amp, you could have a, a private third party program this out. There's a lot of ways to, to do this and to do this well. Again, in a way that segregates the operations from the general expenses of the city, but grows revenue for the city. So there's a question about, we're talking about the entertainment with the camp. Why are we talking about it again with the grand? One, very different in scale and what happens. But when you think back to those surveys, it was the arts, culture and entertainment. I think that this becomes the home to our local arts. This is the place where we can have our youth theater taking place, some of our other creative arts. In Franklin, this is the civic infrastructure that nonprofits use to raise hundreds of thousands of dollars. It's a, it's a venue where they can host their programming. The capacity for hundreds of events annually. They have more events in Franklin at their theater than there are days in the year. And it is very common to have an afternoon event and then to flip it, have a totally different styled event in the evening. So don't just think about, you know, high quality live music performances. There's also in the holidays, maybe a season of, of holiday movies. So those usually go on sale and sell out in the summer in other markets. So you want your family to go see Home Alone, the Saturday after Thanksgiving? You buy your tickets in July or August and it's filled up and it's bringing people downtown. And it's taking advantage of a historical asset that has been here for over 100 years. Conway Convention Center, $25 million construction budget, assuming 40,000 square feet, which is a ballroom adequate to seat a thousand. This would also be operated by a qualified third party and contingent upon partnership with a private full service flagged hotel development. If you're going to have the convention center, you've got to have the convention hotel connected to it. That's what's in the RFPs when the conventions want to travel. You need someone who has a more than one hotel network on, okay, I'm going to book a conference. Not only in Conway, I'm booking a conference in Rogers for 2026, Conway for 2027, Hot Springs for 2028. You're booking all kinds of different, you know, a proven sales partner and then also a proven operator. I can tell you right now, the largest event that we can host in Conway for banquet space. Well, I want to do a meeting and we want to have a meal. It's 120 people. We had to turn down this week, a request, someone wanted to be in Conway, 300. That is a small event and we can't host it because there's, there's not the space that is reliably available. So 52,000 visitors in year one with 15 million in direct spending. 57,000 visitors in year five with 19 million in direct spending. Looking at those four projects, total them up, year one, 320,000 visitors and 43 million in direct spending. Year five, 480,000 visitors and 66 million in direct spending. So again, this is if Conway collected the median rate. This isn't pipe dream. These aren't bloated, out of whack numbers. This is what most of the other people are charging. Median rate would, would contain three eighths of a penny to protect, pave and prepare. Three eighths of a penny to build destination quality civic infrastructure. So I, these were on the list last time. We did not talk about them this time because they were not included in the economic impact study. We're not as far along with planning. But did want to, to mention them because they still will fit inside that three eighths of a cent bond program. What we're calling a reclaimed town square, which would include pavilion. Here is a, a draft sketch. And it's a town square because we're looking at both sides of the tracks. We're looking at Simon Park on the east, which is at the top of that drawing. And then looking at Parkway on the south. And then the, the paved area at the border, bottom border is the current Parkway. And you see there above the Parkway buildings looking east. Downtown parking deck and a district court, which these, maybe in combination with the convention center, are all linked in some way. Didn't go into them in depth tonight because we just didn't have the same level of, of detail and numbers around. So again, we're looking at our, this is the chart. This is where we are today. We do everything that was talked about tonight. We join this wild, crazy group of coastal elites, charging the three cents in city and county local tax. And so I just want to, you know, close with this slide. Actually have two things. One, we're, we're going to, we're going to be around, good Lord willing, in 10 years. What will Conway be? I mean, are we going to continue to add people with the exact same level of services amenities we have? Maybe less if we continue to see our sales tax base erode rather than grow. And in light of that truth, what decisions and actions are most likely to create a city that attracts and retains the next generation? I did some, I did some quick math. And so if you just look at the most recent months' sales tax collections. We're going to go, we're going to go back up to these guys. So Bentonville, most recently, this was the, would have been May sales, Ju- July collections. They collected $3.8 million in sales taxes. And they got another 1.6 million from Benton County. So they got 5.4 million dollars. Now they have 62,000 people to say grace over. They've got to protect them with their police, with their fire. They've got to pave, they've got to do all the things that we do. They have this month, $87 per person to do it with. Rogers in this same cohort, they had 2.15 million in county aid or county share and 5.6 million in sales tax collections for a total of 7.75 million. They have 76,000 people. They had $101 this month to take care of everybody, not to just take care of the people who live there, but to take care of the city employees, to take care of the people who take care of them. Conway, who did not have a share of any county sales tax, collected $3.4 million. And we, using the same population estimates, have 73,000 people. That's $46 per person to take care of our city employees and to take care of the people here. Now, even though Bentonville is smaller, they collected more in local sales tax and then they got another 1.6 from the county. Because people from everywhere are going there and spending. We got what we got. And we didn't throw a fit. But if you want to know why it's harder in some places than it is in others, that's why. And that is all I have for numbers right now. I'm happy to go back onto any of the projects in particular or whatever y'all wish.
Amy, did they, these numbers include land or just construction?
That's a good question. It would be on, it would be construction on, so the Grand Theater would, would include the building. The camp does not assume a land cost. The North Shore Boardwalk does not assume a land cost. And I'm not sure that the convention center does either. Now with the boardwalk, we've already got some private entities who are willing to participate. Obviously, a lot of that project takes place with Game and Fish, who's a participant in the master plan. And then that is also on property owned by the Conway Development Corp.
Counsel, do you have any questions, Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Will you restate the question?
Yeah, the question was, do we have locations? Yeah, the Conway Development Corp. has property that set aside at Central Landing. And some of it's the property that we've traded with the city. That's a proposed campsite. It fits. It's oriented in a way that doesn't really intrude on neighbors, sound to be cast into an I-3 zone. And we've got a site there. The convention center, the site would need to be determined. For the purposes of the election, you can be very broad in that. I think you can be as broad as saying within the city of Conway. But, you know, I think for the purposes of the election, you don't need a latlange on any of these. But, you know, for the North Shore Boardwalk, you know, I think we would, we would be a partner that was always contemplated from strategic planning, the development corp, other private owners in that area and Game and Fish Commission for the amp. You know, we've always kind of held that property in mind with participating if the opportunity arose. Grand Theater is self-evident and then the convention center, yeah, TBD.
Projects that you mentioned, like the total 80s.
Mm-hmm.
35 and 10 and 20.
I think the balance is, would be represented in these projects. In the reclaimed town square, downtown parking deck and district court.
I got a question. Do y'all have an idea of where you're going to put this land? And are we going to be responsible for roads and stuff to the convention center and stuff? Have you figured that into the cost as well?
You know, I, I know we, we haven't given much thought to roads to the convention center because I do think the, the convention center, and look, you're, we'll go back to that slide. Your partner is also going to have, you know, say so in preference. So you pick a site, but your hotel provider and operator says, I don't like this site, then I don't think you have a deal. I think that that, that part is going to have to come together, all parties. And honestly, the city will need to talk about where can we get the most benefit from the location of the convention center? You know, where, where do any of these projects not only fit in, you know, but where do they, where do they help? You know, what are kind of the other stimulative properties of, of where this convention center might be? But I would think all, I would think any convention center space, I mean, it would, it would already need to be in a developed area to have roads.
What percentage of this project does the partner handle? Since you're saying it.
I think the, the model would be for the, the city to own and build, build and own the convention center. And then the partner is going to own and build the adjoining hotel and operate the convention center. And then there would be terms of performance, you know, for, for them. They would also, you know, it's, it's clearly in their best interest to, you know, they're doing 150, 200 room hotel. You know, it is based on bringing in big groups. That, that hotel would not survive in Conway without being filled up with conventions. But I think there would be a performance measure on, hey, our operator needs to bring this many events, needs to bring this many visitors. But what, what they would be bringing is the operations and then the, the 50 million estimated in private investment. And then what they would be getting is the convention center box to operate within.
So the city would be responsible for buying and building the convention center?
That would be, yes. That would be the, the bonded portion would be the construction.
Had to be roads, we'd be responsible for that as well, right?
I would assume just because it's a, but just because it's a road, you know, that your, your hotel developer would, would not build a road.
Talking about a place to put one. And right off the top of my head, I can't, there just. Talking about a place to put one and right off the top of my head, I can't just think of one place because we're talking about how land poor we in different places and we have to put it in a convenient place as well. So that might mean spending extra money to buy the land from someone. See what I'm saying?
No, absolutely. And I think that's all going to go into, you know, that's all gonna go into the math and someone's gonna, someone's gonna want it. Brad, do you remember what the footprint would be for a convention center and hotel, roughly? Yeah. And so that would be for the hotel and the convention center. And so there are, there are sites, but there's also, you know, I think there's, I think there's multiple sites. I can't, I can't speak, I can't commit to someone else's land. Um, I, I'm comfortable speaking about CDC property for the camp and for Lake Conway, but, you know, I think there's other folks who would be interested in putting together or assembling sites for the convention center.
It's the last thing I'm gonna say about that, about this. I'm sure I might have something else to say, but you saying you gonna, wanna put this on the ballot, but you don't wanna actually tell people what they're voting for, you just wanna give them an idea of what they're voting for? I mean, what I'm saying, you don't have specifics on there at all?
No, I think you, I think you have the specifics that you have, um, but you're not dictated, you know, and this is, these, you're getting into some questions for Gordon Wilburn as he builds out the ballot. And that was one of the first questions we asked was how sharp do you have to be? Does it have to be like a meets and bounds? Does it have to be a legal description? And he said, you know, definitely not. One of the ballots that we modeled was Fayetteville and so they have one, it's some bonded money for economic development infrastructure. And so they, they had no clue where they were going to, to put that money. And so I think it does just say, you know, even in or near the city of Fayetteville. Um, and so that's, it's not uncommon to give yourself some latitude. One, just because of the realities of getting a project done, sometimes lines move, addresses need to be adjusted, but then probably to allow for negotiation. I mean, you know, who wins the day that this passes? Did the, the voters win? Did the hotel developer win? Did the landowner win? I think it, you know, I think it's good to have some flexibility.
Thing I'm gonna say, you're talking about who wins. I think the voters need to be the ones that win.
Right.
Because they're the ones gonna be paying the sales tax. That's the only reason why I ask you about the specifics of all of this.
And that's why I think you would wanna, you would wanna keep, I don't wanna say leverage, but I think you would wanna have options and flexibility.
I understand.
As you, as you move forward. And I will say, on the convention center, voters will be paying a portion of, of the sales tax, but all of this is based on people beyond the residents of Conway, non-residents of Conway paying the majority of all of this. Um, and there's a lot of solid math on that. So when you look at things like utility rates and property taxes and all those things, that's when it's on the backs of the people that live here.
Wait, I, I, I have a couple of questions.
Let me, can I answer Theo's question? Because I do think one thing you could do that, that would be, would answer that question for you is I think between now and when you actually vote on it, you do RFPs for each of these projects and you outline what your expectations are and then you let people respond to them on who wants to participate. And so in that respect, you can answer that question, are you willing to give your property to get this project? You know, who are the players? So I think by the time you get to the voters, you have all of those questions answered. And I think that we do that, but if you choose to move forward with this, you do that between when you put it on the ballot and when it actually goes to voters. And then I think that clears up a lot of this, a lot of these questions about where will it be? Who will the operator be? Because that's a really important part of this.
That was my question.
Is that you have, that you have reputable operators that know what they're doing and we know that they're out there and we know that they're interested in being here, but we need to have you guys put the RFP together to get them to respond to it. And then I think it clears up all of those questions that you might have.
Yeah, I think we're talking, I'm talking about timing. There's a difference in the process that happens after it goes on the ballot and the language you're stuck with in the ballot. And so I think that's where I want the, the city to have some latitude. And then if, if people aren't convinced by, well, I don't think there's enough detail, you know, then don't, then don't vote for it. But, you know, don't ask for so many details that you're, you're bound to a, a dot and then you're in a, in a poor negotiating position.
I wasn't asking just for the specific. I'm just saying, me as a, as a taxpayer and a voter, I think they just kind of have, still just giving a blank check to pastors, they kind of needed to know where it was going.
Certainly.
I could be wrong, but that's just my opinion.
Yeah.
So.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
And that, and that was kind of, my question was, do we, I don't say negotiate, but I guess the idea of an RFP is a chance for us to draw out some of the nuances of these projects so that we're not caught by surprise, you know, later on, oh my gosh, you know, it's an extra whatever. Um, and in terms of the operational things, well, the city would physically own each of these bonded projects forever. There would be some sort of contract profit sharing where we would receive, we, the city would receive income. Is that part, is, is, I guess that's my question. Do you?
Yeah, I think you're, you're, those are excellent questions for your bond counsel. Um, and, and look, and it is the, the MOUs, the RFQs, the RFPs, all of these are very prescribed by municipal law in Arkansas. And so you'll just, you know, you'll develop those relationships and develop that, that interest, you know, over time in accordance with state law. And so how the money goes back and forth is, is prescribed. It's, it's not, that's not the part that's, that's really negotiated. But, you know, I can imagine on, for an RFQ, someone go, well, I'm in, I'm interested in it if it's here, because I think that's where it'll work and, well, I'm interested in it if it's here.
Yeah, I guess I see them as, as operating contracts, you know? They're entering, whoever they is, is entering into a contract with the city to operate these facilities for.
There's a specific thing that exists within state law and so I'm not gonna.
That's fine.
And I think, I think I wrote this down, Tyler, correct me if I'm wrong on this and I know you love doing that. Uh, in order for us to use tact exempt bonds, we have to have a qualified management contract that has predetermined parameters of how costs and profits are shared. By law, management gets a set fee, anything over that is remitted to the city. Likewise, any shortfall, the management group would still collect their money, but any shortfall will be made up by the city. Is that correct? Okay. Does that, does that answer your question?
It's the prohibitions on private use and that's where I wanted to, when you talk about revenue sharing, it is very, there's just hard and fast rules on, on what's in and what's out.
Then I have just one more question. Maybe you can point me in the right direction because I'm sure you don't have it with you. What would the average citizen pay in additional sales tax for 1/8 of a cent? And I know that, that's a very vague question and, and I, I'm trying, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, what, what kind of impact does that have on, you know, whatever the median family person is here in Conway? Because we would still pay additional sales tax if this passed.
I see, I can feel Corey staring at me because he had some really good handouts that, uh, are in my, are in my, are in my office right now. Well, this is for the, this is, this is for the fully loaded. So let's say.
This would be for all of it.
Let's do, yeah, let's do the, the three quarter and we'll do, um, my favorite example go, because it hits close to home. So Chick-fil-A, so your, your chicken salad sandwich meal at, at Chick-fil-A or your, your other favorite, you know, drive-through chicken place. Currently, that ticket is $12.74. That's $11.50 chicken salad sandwich. State sales tax is .75, county .06, .02, and then .23 on your prepared food. So 1274. If the whole project you've seen tonight went into effect, it'd be 1282. So it'd be an increase of nine cents. A dozen strawberry cookies from Cross Creek, another, I'm just picking iconic foods. I've already eaten too. Goes from 1960 to 2007. That's an increase of 47 cents. Maybe one less cookie, you know? I'm just going through some of these other examples. But I mean, you know, it's, it's a three-quarter of a cent. It's three-quarter percent increase, you know, on your, on all of your purchases. We've talked about doing a three-quarter of percent off coupon for participating businesses. We can probably find somebody to help back that for Conway residents. Yeah.
I got another question. I'm sorry. I don't have nobody over here to stop me.
Yeah, you're using, you're just using your neighbor's questions.
Uh, the hotel is, you're talking about someone's gonna build a hotel. Do we get end of day revenue since they're gonna profit off of using our convention center?
No, you would not do that. And well, I would say that would also be prescribed in your, in your agreement. What, what you typically avoid is revenue sharing with your private operator. You have an agreement for the, for the facility.
That's fine. I'm just trying to figure out where the money's going and who has to pay for it.
Right.
I mean, if we have, have to pay for it, I wanna make sure the city's taking care of what they spent.
Absolutely. Yeah, and I think that's why, and I'll provide you, it was a 92-page impact study and we'll, we'll get it to you, but I think it does go back to some of this. You know, there's 15 million in direct spending in year one, 19 million in, uh, direct spending in year five. You know, all those things are taxable. Um, you know, your hotel tax, your food tax, all of those things run up pretty quick. And again, when you're talking about a convention hotel, this is money that was not going to be here before. That's, that's new money. You know, I'm not gonna be staying in that hotel. If there's a convention there, I'll, I'll be driving back and forth. Um, and so that's really where you see some of the, you know, most, most startling economic impact. That and the, and the camp because it's, it's a, got a large market. It's, it's really throwing our boundaries out further.
Maybe remind me again of what the eighth for infrastructure? What is the infrastructure?
Well, we've talked about, so Brett at Conway Corporation has said that he's willing to, to come and talk to you a little bit about, uh, some of their constraints. I'll talk about that from the Conway Development Corp standpoint. We are, um, you know, the community's been a little bit of a victim of its own success. We are out of industrial real estate. We have one small site left. We've been very fortunate when a large utility user has come here. Conway Corp has had the borrowing capacity, reserves, resources on hand to make it happen, but he also has constraints on how much in reserves he is required by his bond under, by his bond underwriters to have on hand at any time. And we could have two good things happen the same year and it'd be bad news because we're not able to, um, we're not able to finance that infrastructure. The other, um, point that Brett brought up to me is, you know, his alternative is to raise rates in order to fund infrastructure. Well, if that were the case, the only people paying for this job creating infrastructure would be residents of Conway when a lot of the people working there are not residents of Conway. So is there a way for us to, you know, invite other people's money into that deal when that job is gonna pay their bills just like it pays ours? So maybe they can participate in the finance. Um, but then, you know, a little bit of a new idea, I mean, it's another issue, but the availability of housing is almost, majority of the problems for housing in Conway right now relate to the costs for lot development. And, um, that issue hits in a different way when you realize that if the house isn't here, you know, not only are we not getting that family for the turnback on the population, if they build outside the city of Conway, you're not getting a good portion of their monthly taxable sales. So it's a, it is now a double whammy when, you know, 10 years ago, if you lived 15 minutes away, no big deal, you were gonna, you were gonna shop here and we were gonna get the bulk of the revenue. Not necessarily the case anymore. So I think Brett can speak the best of that, but it's, it's for him to have money to, you know, make strategic or timely infrastructure investments.
How broad is that definition for infrastructure?
I think it would be as.
Do that include streets?
It would be as, well, but you have a street, you have a street maintenance fund proposed here. But I think the definition would be, it would definitely be set by this body.
I was thinking new infrastructure, which might mean, you know, kind of what Theo alluded to, which is new projects, new housing, which I'm right there with you with kind of the lack of that starter home, affordable housing. You know, well, then we'd have to build roads to that. And so I, I'm just asking, is that, could that be included as infrastructure? In addition to?
I don't even know if he's here, but I can feel Brett staring at me. I think he's probably got that money spent.
He's in Arizona on a trip with his lineman, doing some work for somebody.
Yeah. Oh, that's right.
Yeah. I'll just tell you, there's, there, there's no shortage to the large amount of infrastructure we need. Again, start with item A, we have no industrial sites of any marketable scale left in the city of Conway that are served with utilities. So if, if that's a, if that's a thing we want to do in the future, if that's a, an arena we want to participate in, then it's, it's going to take some stepping up.
You, what was the, on the first part, the three eights, you said protect, pave and what?
Prepare.
Prepare. I'm trying to come up with another P to add to that. And the best I can do to make your P's continues puddles, drainage.
Drainage.
Drainage. In the street or somewhere in there, you know, we don't have any dedicated money for drainage. And I know when the ARP money we got a couple of years ago, we socked away, I think, four or five million of that for drainage and it did some good work, but it was going pretty quick. Um, so if we could somehow maybe include puddles in that, uh, include some of that street money for drainage, but that's a decision we can make, you know, as we downwind the weeds. This is an opportunity to actually address drainage.
And is drainage a part of any infrastructure?
I think drainage definitely would be, but also, you know, I want to point out the pressure that move, you're, you're doing these things now. I mean, we're, we're buying police cars, fire trucks and we're taking care of streets now. It's just, it's just coming out of your existing budget. It's coming out of that $46 per person per month. So when we can be strategic and when we can plan our capital spending for public safety, when we can plan our maintenance, not just hope for good weather during holiday shopping, you know, it's gonna be easier. It'll be, it'll be like the other cities do it. But that's, we're not innovating here.
I got another one. I'm sorry on that side. You know why? When I get to talking, I can't talk at home. So anyway, I'm honest. So this is your proposal? Is it set in stone that it goes that, that way? Because me, I think streets, maintenance and policing and fire should have more. That's just me. I think, I think they need, they need more.
Listen, that, that, that ain't the job I ran for. I've got one vote, this is, none of this is set in stone and this is not my proposal. This is.
That's why I was there.
This is a model. So no, this is, these are among, this is what you could do if you had, if you collected the median rate. This is what you could do.
Okay.
But you could manipulate this in, in any, any fashion that you wanted. Now, I would, I, since I'm up here and you asked, you need to think about growing the base, not just, we're gonna meet every need, we're gonna meet every, you know, we're gonna solve every problem and then people will come from far away to see our underground infrastructure and to see our problem solved. I mean, that's, that ain't gonna grow us.
Same, I said, I was doing by the same token, police and no, no knock on the fire department. When Christmas season is going and our police are out here patrolling, you'd be surprised that the people from Little Rock come up here to shop because of safety. And I think we need to take care of stuff like that. That's just my opinion because we might be losing on some other end, but I know people personally come from Little Rock and around to shop out here because of safety. And so we, that's why I say I think they need to be compensated as well. That's, that's just me. And I'm not knocking the fire department, uh, at all. I'm just saying what people be telling.
A- absolutely.
A- absolutely. And, and that's that, that's a good procedural question. Like, my understanding, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding is what you have shown are options of what we could do. There are probably also other things that we could do if we wanted to pursue those. And what happens from here is we discuss, tonight's the night to ask questions, hear feedback. We're not voting tonight. We're gonna give this more time. But what we will ultimately suggest, if something moves forward here, will be an eighth a cent for public safety, an eighth a cent for infrastructure, et cetera, et cetera. And then I believe we've talked about, like, we, we would vote on those individually to make a recommendation. Is that the process for how this works?
I think so. I think that's correct. Mr. Finkin, mine is not here, uh, nor is Gordon, but that, from my understanding, that is correct.
Thank you.
How much would each of these one eighths of a cent bring in?
What's the estimate? Each one eighth will generate, given our current level of, you know, shopping, transactions, salesable, taxable economy, each one eighth will generate about two and a half million dollars.
It's one eighth.
That's right. And then each one eighth will bond about thirty-three, thirty-five million dollars. And so you are not as restricted on how you format the questions that are pay as you go. So your eighth, your eighth, your eighth. I think that's more a function of, um, communicating with the voters and signaling to them, you're, you know, here's how we're gonna spend the money. You could ask for three eighths and just say, it's all going in the kitty and trust us and, you know, we'll, we'll do what needs doing. That's, that would be allowed, but probably not responsible. With regard to the bonded projects, you are required to spell them out individually by purpose. So you couldn't combine them, you know, we're gonna do a, a boardwalk and a theater. You need to spell them out into separate questions. Any more questions for Mr. Gates? Any easy ones?
No.
Mr. Whittingham, do you have any questions? I'm sorry. I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Hawkins.
Talk to us about a timeframe, because I know that this can't be done at any
That's right, yeah.
Particular time.
So, so moving forward, uh, you would need to solidify your ballot language, uh, the end of August. Uh, that allows, you know, that allows not much, but adequate time for your attorney to prepare the, the ballot the way that it needs to be prepared and then sent to the election commission. Uh, the election would be, uh, I believe November eighteenth. Were it to pass, you would start collecting taxes probably in April. Uh, the bonded projects would, you know, some would be ready to act on almost immediately, um, just because of how far, far along they are. And so you could start drawing down those proceeds and, and get the work started, especially given that lag between when you knew it passed and then when the proceeds were available. You are, the best practice is to be underway on all your projects in three years. So that also allows for time to, you know, design, negotiate, bid, change everything. Uh, but you need to be, have the ground broken on everything in three years. And y'all have done big projects and you know it always takes a little longer to, to get going when you're starting from scratch. So some of these projects would, would begin immediately. Some would, there would be a lot of, you know, a lot of work to do on the design, engineering, and bidding. But that would be the, that'd be the general timeline. Is that what you were asking on all of it? Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. Anyone else for council? I think Mr. Whittingham has some accounting questions. Jamie, come on up, Tyler.
I don't know who's gonna ask.
Not necessarily counting questions, uh.
I thought it sounded good.
It does sound good.
Thank you.
Uh, a, a couple of things I just wanted to point out to the council, um, and some of these will depend on what the council chooses to move forward with. First of all, the question that Theo brought up earlier, uh, we have learned from bond counsel that to do these projects with a bond issue, the city has to own, or at least have a long-term lease on the property that they're built on. So you kind of end up in a tough position, because you can't really go talk to, you know, a potential hotel company, convention company about this and, and tying and nailing down which property that is and getting a long-term lease in place if the bond issue's not passed. So it makes it a little bit difficult in that respect. We've been advised with, uh, from bond counsel that once the vote, uh, once the election passes, we'll have about five years to issue the bonds on all those projects. So we want to wait as long as we can to issue the bonds, because once you issue the bonds, then the clock starts ticking on how long you have to spend that money, which is three years, under IRS regulations. So just want everybody to be cognizant of that and, and thinking about that going forward. Because, you know, when you talk about negotiations for either buying land, uh, or getting a long-term lease on it, those can drag out, uh, and there is a timing, uh, part to all this.
Did I understand you say that we don't have to own the property before the election? We have to own the property before any bond is issued? So we'd have at most three years to iron all of that out, at most? Did I understand correctly?
We'd have to own the property to be able to build these facilities
Sure.
with, with city, city bonds.
Understood.
Yeah. What was the other one I was gonna talk about? The, so the, the projects that Jamie didn't really hit on too much tonight, the district court facility, the parking deck, and the farmer's market, right? Yeah. So those three, if we do move forward with those, those are gonna have operating cost implications to the city. I don't really see any way around that. And I think there's big questions to answer about those. For one, with the district court facility, there's a new state law that takes effect August fifth with regards to how district courts are funded and how they're paid for. And I'm no attorney, but I would advise, I would think that we would need to have, uh, the way, I understand that you need, cities and counties need to have an agreement in place on how they're gonna carry out this new state law. So before we go talk about building a district court, I would think it would be behoove us to have an agreement in place with Faulkner County on how we're gonna implement that new state law.
Is that the one where the county pays more for the running of the district court?
I, I believe in the law, it says that the, the costs and the, uh, both the cost and the, the revenue that the court brings in can be shared fifty-fifty between cities and counties. Where now, where the city is paying all the expenses of it, with the exception of, there is a state law, uh, that was existing prior to this one, that required the county to reimburse us for half of the two head clerk salaries. Other than that, all the expense has been buried by the city up until now. So that, now that this new state law is gonna come into effect, all that can change. And, uh, we were told, uh, by municipal league and by legislative audit, which legislative, we don't do legislative audit, but legislative audit is, uh, very well versed in state law. Uh, they both told us that the best thing to do is have an agreement, something in writing, between your city and your county as to what you're gonna do going forward under this new state law. So that's something that needs to be considered.
Tyler, operationally, it would, the assumption would be that a new district court would be bigger.
Right.
And would cost more just to operate, not necessarily more people.
Right.
But just the facility itself.
Right.
Okay. I just want to, on top of what we're already paying.
Right.
But we might end up paying less because
There's more of the county share.
Share, okay. I just want to make sure I got it all.
Since we talking about that.
Final points.
Uh, if, if you're gonna build a, a district court building, you gotta allow for parking, because that's the problem over here on Parkway now, parking is terrible. And so that means we got to purchase land somewhere else, because I don't see anywhere downtown you can put a district court.
I think district court needs to be out of downtown. That's my
That's what I'm saying.
That's my opinion.
I agree.
That's my opinion.
Only problem, it's not gonna be a problem. Um, the only, uh, chatter you're gonna have about that, uh, is the transportation of inmates from unit one and unit two to the facility. That's why they like district court where it is now, because unit one has crossed the street and unit two is, and then you gotta transport them out here, uh, wherever. So that's gonna be another conversation you got to have.
I see you. Thank you for bringing
One possibility would be a district court with parking deck. Just a thought.
Say it again.
A, a district court with a parking deck in, in downtown. Just a thought.
Right. So the next thing I was gonna mention is that the parking deck, uh, I think it needs to be decided by the council. Is that going, if, if we build that, is it gonna be free to park or is there gonna be a fee to park? How you answer that question has implications on whether or not you can build it with tax exempt bonds. So that needs to be decided.
Just which?
Can't give a private business dedicated parking spaces if it, if it was built with tax exempt bonds. If you build it with tax exempt bonds, you can charge to park there, but everybody that parks there has to pay the same amount.
Give a poor amount if someone guaranteed that they were gonna take twenty spaces or forty spaces.
That's, that's what we understand. Yes, sir.
We get a clarification on that?
I mean, that's, that's
That's it?
That's it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And there could be operational costs associated with a parking garage, just
So then, you know, if you, if it's free parking, that's great to have downtown free parking. But when it comes time to maintain and, and whatever, that facility, you're going into the general fund to, to do that.
Things free.
Right.
And if, if you're gonna build a parking deck over the district court, then you have to put in some special things for security, because you're talking about transporting prisoners to and from the building. See, you're gonna have to feel like pay enough, or you can bring them straight down and go straight into court without them coming on the street. So you gotta consider that as well.
At the, if we're gonna hit the November election, we got a lot of work to do between now and then. The project descriptions that Gordon has right now, they lack sufficient detail to go on the ballot. Uh, he's got a lot of questions that need to be answered, uh, with the help of Jamie and, and the Chamber and CDC group. And then questions to be answered by the council, uh, questions to be answered about where these projects are gonna go, where they're gonna go, who owns that land, how do we get it? How much is it gonna cost to get it? Would they do a lease? So I just wanted to put that out there. Not that it can't be done, but there's a lot of work to be done if we're gonna make that November election deadline.
Mr. Jones, due to your vast knowledge on that, I found my committee man for the, for the, for the district court building.
Who's that? Uh, one of y'all volunteers?
Oh, you, yeah. Thank you for bringing those things up.
Well, I, I just know from vast experience, this, this
That's why you gonna chair that committee?
I guess you second that then, thank you. I appreciate it.
At this time, at this time, we're gonna open the floor to, uh, I'm sorry, yes, sir. Yes, sir, Mr. Ledbetter.
I don't feel good about the eight on public safety. I think we need a quarter on that.
Mark, we pull your mic down, so there's something, I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
You said that, you know, police people come up here for that reason, safety? And, and there's a lot of, a lot of things come under public safety.
There is, when you No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. When you look at the costs, and I asked for a list from the chiefs as to their, what their needs are gonna be over the next five years, the cost of vehicles, fire trucks, fire apparatus, a shooting range for the police department, station eight for the fires department, uh, not to mention personnel in both departments, um, I would have to go along with y'all on, on that. On, I don't think an eighth is enough for what we have to build in the future for both of those departments.
And we've got CIOC up there too, dispatch people.
Yeah.
You know, that equipment up there is expensive.
Just look how much you pay for the last fire truck.
Two point two.
Yeah. And the fire station, wasn't it two point?
Three point two.
Three point two.
Yeah. And then PD needs a, a shooting range, and it will have to be enclosed pretty much anywhere in Conway, uh, as far as safety. Not to mention the heat and everything that's going on here. But, uh, I, I will get this list to the council, uh, that, that police and fire have both sent to me. It, it's pretty good breakdown on, uh, air packs. I think Mike's got a million dollars in air packs that has to be replaced in two years. And I mean, those are, those are big ticket items that, that are ongoing. Dispatch, Sean's not here tonight, but I know he has some additional costs coming up with upgrades. So, uh, public safety is, uh, I, I think we'll, we'll need at least a quarter. Is that fair, Mr. Jones, Mr. Ledbetter?
It's fair for me. We got a lot
Something we talk about as a council.
We got a lot of planning to do and discussions, because this is just, uh, breaking the tip off to me, because it's a whole lot of things that we don't know and haven't discussed. And if we gonna get it done, we got to get it done. I mean, before it's talking and getting some of this stuff ironed out, man.
And, and we've got some more meetings scheduled with, uh, with Chamber, uh, our staff does, to break down, get a better breakdown of costs. And hopefully, we've got at least two more meetings, public meetings on this, uh, that'll be, uh, committee meetings beforehand. So you're right, we got a lot of things to, to look over. So, but I appreciate that. At this time, we will open the floor up to comment or questions. If you would, uh, keep it to three minutes, state your name and address for the record. And if someone's already said something once, there, there's really no need to repeat it. But at this time, we're opening the floor to folks who are gonna speak for or against, or, or just wanna give a comment or ask a question. So the, the floor is open. Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm Jerry Adams at eighteen twenty-two Robinson. I have a new, I moved here fifty-two years ago to join twenty other people to start Axiom. At that time, the, the, uh, population was sixteen thousand. It's right now pressing towards seventy thousand. I'm also the lead investor in Mike's place. I'm also the vice chair of the CDC. And I think the issue that's being talked about here is how do we sustain a growing fire department, a growing police department, and so on, with revenues and our sales stack that's eroding? So what's been proposed, I think, is really pretty straightforward. How do we bring people in here that were gonna spend money? And there is a lot of details connected to it, a lot of details. But other communities have solved these things. These are not insurmountable. But I think this community has always been a progressive community, made ahead of the curve. And I think what's being presented right now are two or three very common sense options that other, other, other cities have held. We've got to bring people into this community, convention centers, the AMP, other things like that, are, will really help fund some of the progressive issues where we need to invest in our department, police department, streets. So I really am incredibly supportive of this thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Anyone else?
I say so.
Yes, sir.
I'm not, not saying that we don't need that. I'm just saying we need to get together on the breakdown of how we spending the money. That's, that's my concern. We need, I know we need to draw visitors and people in here, but we need to take care of home first. That's just my opinion. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
I didn't even start yet. You didn't cut me off a little bit. So, and that was a great point that you just made. Uh, I'm Greg Weber, uh, one five four five, uh, Chinook here in Conway. And I want to encourage you all, uh, uh, I don't agree with all of the items that, that we are, that have been presented to you to, to invest in. However, I think that investing in yourself and ourselves is important. I moved here five years ago. Uh, I've lived in about fourteen different cities and communities across the United States. Love the people here, absolutely love it. But holy cow, do I wish there was something more to do here that was outside of the UCA campus or one of the campuses. So I think investing in some type of economic activity and culture activity would be great. Uh, I am hesitant as a thirty-five-year, uh, international producer, uh, having worked with and run five different, uh, uh, producing companies. I am, I'm very hesitant and encourage you to do more research on a three-hundred-seat theater. Typically, the three-hundred-seat theaters require a lot of subsidy, either from you all or from private foundations. Uh, and knowing that the Reynolds has about a thirty-thousand-dollar, uh, a, a thirty-thousand-member, uh, attendance annually, twenty-one thousand people in the first year of anything here in Conway, really gives me doubts. Consultants are great, but I encourage you to talk to seasoned professionals. A great person in town, as you probably all know, would be Amanda Horton. Put her in here and let her talk to you about what would work. I think that the AMP I think that the AMP up in Walton, uh, is successful because it also has two large cities. It has Springfield and it has Tulsa within a two-hour drive. We don't have anything within a two-hour drive. So that, building that economy for that cultural, uh, uh, attraction from outsiders is the item you'll have to focus on first. You already have multiple theater groups in town. Can any of you name them all? Why? Because we don't promote them. So we, we have people trying to do this in town, but we're not putting local public money in promoting the fact that the entertainment center is here. It took us, after moving here a year and a half, just to figure out that there were other theaters here in town because there's no promotion for it. So I encourage you, yes, I think the taxes are great. I think this is a great idea. But first and foremost, begin investing in what you currently have and build that culture of people wanting to go out for entertainment. Thank you.
I can name the red curtain because they put me in one of their productions one time. I didn't have.
Well, that's one.
I didn't have to say, say anything. I just had to fall, fall out of a chair.
That's one. There's a couple others. I encourage you all to kind of look them up and go visit them. They're nice companies.
Thank you. Welcome to Conway. Anyone else? We all know who you are, but still have to say your name.
I don't have a sign. Um, my name is Audie Allenbaugh, 75 Taylor Circle. Thank you, council members, for the opportunity to address you tonight. Before us is a proposal to raise taxes, and let's be honest, no one likes a tax increase. Most people don't even like taxes as they are. But I believe we've come to a crossroads in our city's development and decisions made now will shape the foot, future of Conway for years to come. Let me begin on a personal note. I moved to Conway as a 19-year-old college student. Since then, the city has given me so much. I've earned two degrees from the University of Central Arkansas. I've attended plays, symphonies, art exhibits, ballgames, football, basketball, soccer, you name it. I've had all the joy of watching the city grow, meeting new people, learning new things all along the way. In short, Conway has been good to me and it's been good for me. Many of you know that I work for the Lewis family, a name deeply tied to Conway's development. Conway alone has over 1.3 billion dollars in real estate. With that level of investment, it's critical that we seriously think about protecting what's here, whether from fire, crime, or other threats to our safety and infrastructure. That's why I'm asking that if this tax is approved, we consider directing at a minimum one-fourth of the cents collected towards our first responders and dispatchers. I served on the focus group that examined firefighter compensation. It was no small task. There's a lot of moving parts, some within the city's control and some without. But one thing was clear to me that the relationship between those tasks with growing the city and those tasks with protecting the city must be symbiotic. We can have both progress and protection, but I don't believe we can have either unless we are committed to being equitable in how we support the people to keep this city running safely and efficiently. Thank you.
Thank you, Audie.
Good evening. Uh, my name's Larry Rath, and I live at 70 Kensington Drive. Uh, I think the disconnect that you have here in this community is, um, which Mr. Gates can tell you that the state of Arkansas has the third highest sales tax in the nation. You know how they do that? Special elections because nobody wants to show up and everything passes. That's just mathematically statistically proven. Um, Mr. Grimes, thank you for the word puddles because this council has already gave $50,000. It was earmarked for CDBG money for downtown flood control to a private restaurant. Um, what I think that this council should do is, you know, we're a city of first class. We have three colleges with the county divisions in them. Call on the state, have them give us an audit. That cost zero dollars, zero cents. And we'd be like, okay, well, how did those monies go to a private restaurant? Or how did our former CFO go missing a couple million dollars and then, oh, the next month we wanna buy Spirit Mobile Homes? And the real reason that we have problems like this is because the lack of civil service protection for our employees. Okay? So from 1957 to 2000, that extended for all the employees. Okay? 2000, it was rescinded by the mayor and the city council. 2005, it was reinstated for the fire and police only. Okay? So what you have here is you have a workforce that wants to come to work, do their job very well, but they can't speak out because they fear retaliation, such as having to take another vote after a union meeting, which is illegal, but it happens here in Conway. Um, Mike Beebe was one of the last, what I call true guards of the Democrats where he kept everybody in line. He had a standing policy with his employees that he said, hey, if you come up with an idea that saves our government so much money, you get 10% of that. Have we looked at that? We've got smart employees, but you guys don't know what's going on down there because number one, they're scared of losing their job. They speak up. They don't wanna cause a fuss. They just wanna get their job, get their pension and go home. How many civil service complaints by private citizens have been investigated by the Civil Service Commission since its reinstatement? Zero.
I don't know that they've gotten any.
They're, they're not allowed to. I've tried to file one. So it's zero. So it's, it's suppression by design. You guys don't wanna know what's going on down in the city council, you know, Malley's was a perfect example. That should have been handled by the Civil Service Commission.
One minute, Mr. Rath.
Yes, sir. Um, the, the other ideas that we could do is merge departments. Parks and Recreation with the physical plant. That didn't come from me. That came from the former Parks and Recreation's director. Um, you know, if this was a tax that was passed and put on either a primary or a general election, I wouldn't have a problem with it. But this is like a property tax, just like what every school board does, every school board election. You, you go up there to vote because you know what? Every time, they sneak in another property tax. So I, I think that we should look, take a long, hard look at ourselves, go to the fire and police and say, hey, what could we do? Here's the incentive, 10% goes to you if you save us money. And then you guys could stand up here every month and give rewards and say, hey, we just saved some money for the city. Isn't that great? I think that sure beats, that's a better optics than, uh, going to the, to the citizens of Conway and saying, oh, we're gonna have a, an election and, uh, it's gonna be on a off day and nobody's gonna show up and it's gonna pass. So that's my opinion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Rath. I've been with the city since 1981. Mr. Ledbetter has been with the city since 1977. I have always just known civil service to be police and fire who, and so, I don't know. Anyway, anyone else like to speak for, against, or make a comment? Yes, ma'am. Hey, hey.
Billy Goins, 485 Hannah Drive. And I have a couple comments.
Can you pull the mic down?
Yeah.
Thank you, ma'am.
Is that better?
There you go.
All right. Um, so Conway is amazing. I'd love to support our arts and culture. A couple statements that I wanna make around that is when we think about the increased tax, we also wanna think about our citizens of Conway who can't afford the Chick-fil-A sandwich or the cookies already. So, um, when we're looking at raising this tax, um, we wanna consider them. They may be individuals who would get jobs at that convention center, but if we look at on the front end, who's gonna have to shoulder that? I do also agree with reinvesting or relooking at what we have to support that and promote those things. Um, I also want us to consider the cities that are around us that do have amphitheaters, mentioning Little Rock. I'm from Little Rock, um, originally, so Conway transplant. But, um, how the amphitheater there and also in Lakewood Village, how those are being utilized and how, what's the realistic look at how they use, uh, for midweek events for those, um, if we're looking at that for us in Conway.
Thank you so much. Anyone else like to speak?
I'm back. Grace Reins with 34,000 Oak Circle. Um, I mean, you guys know how I feel about this from last time, but I did bring a few more stats because you know that's where my heart is at and I just can't help myself. You know what I mean?
Good, you're good at it.
Um, I'm good at it. Thank you, Mayor Castleberry. Okay. So, um, 70% of visitor spending in small and mid-sized towns happens in the downtown core. Um, so we talk about a lot of these projects being investing in the downtown core. I feel like a lot of, a lot more spending could happen if we continue to draw down there. Um, cities that da, invest in downtown culture institutions often see property values increase, um, by 20 to 30% um, in those blocks. Uh, for every $1 spent on arts and culture, an additional $9 is spent in local spending. Um, six farmers, shoppers in farmers markets spend 60% more in downtown neighboring businesses than on not, um, in downtown neighboring businesses than they do on non-market days. Um, all of this shows the investment specifically in the downtown projects. Um, I have the pleasure of serving on the downtown partnership board. Um, and so I think those projects specifically are important for our downtown businesses, um, and how we continue to see them grow. Um, as it has been said already, but I would like to reemphasize, these projects will allow us to bring more dollars into Conway, um, to then generate more sales tax. That's, that's the problem that we're talking about. That's the theme that we've seen across the board is that there is not enough downtown, uh, there's not enough sales tax dollars coming into the city to fund the projects that we need to fund, whether that be for public safety, whether that be for our employees, whether that be for other projects. We don't have enough money coming in and those are continuing to trend downward. If we just continue talking about that and we don't do something innovative about it, it's just gonna continue to happen to trend downward. And so although there may be a lot of problems that we've got to solve here, I am confident that you guys as the leaders that the city of Conway has elected, um, y'all have the capability to solve those problems to answer the questions that have been raised tonight. Um, we've got enough time to do that. We can wait until another election. That's absolutely an opportunity. But that just gives other communities the opportunity to solve these problems quicker than us and then to capitalize on those sales tax dollars. So there's only so many dollars going so many places. Conway has the opportunity to capture some of those dollars. And I feel like we have to act quickly to do that because we're just gonna see quarter after quarter, month after month go by where we don't make the money that we could potentially on sales tax revenue. It's just gonna continue to trend downwards. Um, so I hope that you guys are not the type of leadership that would sit idly by. I hope that you're the type of leadership that sees those problems and says, we can tackle that. We can answer those questions. We can ask questions. We can get the right people in the room. Um, and so that's my ask for the council tonight is how do we, how do we answer those questions? How do we tackle those problems so that we don't sit idly by while sales tax continues to trend downward? Um, so that we can invest and we can see the type of economic benefit that I've been able to show, that study after study will show happens whenever we invest in projects like these. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Take, take one or two more? A gentleman in the back stood up. Just wait a second, Larry, and you can come back.
Hey, I'm Ryan Wolf. Uh, live at 835 South Donaghy, uh, also a firefighter here in the city. Uh, appreciate all y'all's work y'all been doing to, uh, help us out. Uh, just a few thoughts on this. Uh, obviously, we think all these amenities would be great to have. Uh, who wouldn't wanna have all that stuff? I mean, it sounds great. Uh, the problem is, we've been told just a week ago that we don't have the bullets in the gun to attack issues with fire department salaries and staffing. So capital expenditures, as far as I understand, won't address those problems. Correct? Uh, now, I understand the trickle-down economics of having the, the amenities that are, uh, being brought up. But, uh, those sales taxes collected, they're not gonna, it's not gonna turn a profit immediately. These buildings aren't gonna come up in a day, so it's gonna take time. And unfortunately, as far as the fire department goes, that's something we don't have. We're losing experience. We're losing guys every day. And, uh, so there's a lot of turnover. Uh, and so our question is, uh, the citizen survey that has been brought up, uh, assumes that public safety and infrastructure are taken care of. And they're not at this time. Uh, so the question is, what is keeping a much larger portion of this sales tax from going towards solving the issues that the council has said are important to? Uh, public safety will be tacked onto this tax to get support from the community. Uh, but does the community really know how behind we are in salary, how behind we are in staffing? Uh, under NFPA 1710, the NFPA, which is the national standard for fire protection, recommends the minimum number of firefighters per apparatus be four. Five of the 10 apparatus in Conway are two people, minimum staffing. Now, if nobody's off on the calendar, then we may have three guys and that's a good day. Uh, but we're putting firefighters at risk and more importantly, we're putting the citizens we serve at risk by trying to do a job with half the manpower. The citizens, citizens of Conway deserve to be protected by the best firemen available. And at CFD, we wanna produce the best firemen available, uh, firefighters, I should say. I apologize. Uh, but when the pay lacks behind the major cities, anywhere from 15 to 20%, we're not gonna be able to retain those great firefighters and that experience. That's where all that turnover comes in. We'll just be a training ground for other fire departments. It takes around a hundred thousand dollars in the first year to train a new firefighter, between gear, academy, all the training they have to go to. So when you look at it like that, that's, it's not, oh, it's just another body we can replace. It's, you're losing money. We're leaking money like a sip. Uh, I understand last week was a starting point, but we can't keep kicking the can down the road. Uh, as Mr. Jones and Mr. Ledbetter have both said, uh, why can't we ask for a bigger por, portion to where we can address these salary issues? We talk about not having bullets in the gun. Like, this seems like a great opportunity to address that issue. Uh, we appreciate all the, like I said, we appreciate all the work y'all have done for this. Uh, and, uh, yes, if we can adequate, adequately address firefighter pay, public safety as a whole and infrastructure, and then do these amenities as well, then by all means, like, let's do it. But as was stated in the presentation, what's the number one thing we start with? That's public safety and infrastructure. So let's address that first. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Wolf, I, I would, I do wanna address one thing, but thank you very much for what you said.
Yes, sir.
While anything we do, what we talked about, would not directly go to salaries, all right? What would happen is the one-eighth for public safety, perhaps a quarter. One-eighth generates 2.5 million. One-quarter generates 5 million. That money would go towards police fire capital in the general fund, thus freeing up money for other purposes, which could be, so.
Sure.
I'll answer your question.
Yes, sir. Uh, my only thing on that would be kind of in the same way y'all are asking for specific numbers for them on where, like, where is this money actually gonna go? That's where we kinda have those same questions back is how can we get a guarantee that that money is gonna go to those places?
I understand that.
Yes, sir.
And I don't, please understand that we can't guarantee that.
Sure.
Because that gets you into promises that.
Sure.
May end up in court.
Yes, sir.
But, um, in theory, again, money freed up from general fund by new capital money brings up money for other things. I'll leave it at that.
Yes, sir. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Thank you all for being here this evening, council. Any, any thoughts?
What, what next? What are you hoping for?
Okay, we, uh, let me look at my calendar here.
I mean, I know we meet again.
I know that we are scheduling a meeting, uh.
It's the fifth?
We have a, a sit-down with the chamber on specifics. Our next meeting is September, I'm sorry, September, good gosh, August.
I don't have it on the calendar.
No, no, it'd be August 12th and 26th. So our plans are to talk about this again in committee meetings, the 12th and 26th, and have a special meeting. Probably if we don't finish it up on the 26th, probably that week and then take y'all's final vote. So there will still be time for public engagement, two more council meetings. That work for everyone?
It does. And I'm, go ahead.
Does that work timeframe, Felicia? Okay.
Um, and I, I, I'm not asking us to do this tonight. I'm curious, like, when do we start narrowing the funnel down and start saying?
That'd be your, after we have the sit-down and try to get specific numbers, very specific numbers. We'll also bring Gordon Wilburn into the next, probably next two meetings. Uh, he can answer your federal tax questions and what we can and can't do and, and the wording and things like that. Uh, he can answer your federal tax questions and what we can and can't do, and, and the wording and things like that. But there will be a point where this council has to decide what, if any, will be, will, will be voted on, if, if y'all decide to take it to the people.
We have a spitball for when in the process that happens. I'm not, I'm not trying to pin you down, I'm just curious.
Oh, we'll start, we'll start hammering down next two meetings.
Okay, thank you.
Would Gordon show up maybe next Tuesday?
Yes. It'd be the, be the twelfth.
Uh, that's why I was asking, could maybe he come next Tuesday? Um, it's another special meeting, so he can tell us what he can tell us.
I'll, I'll reach out to him, I don't know if he's on vacation or anything, but I, I will find out, Andy, and if he's available, then we'll have a committee meeting, I'm good at that if y'all are. Yeah.
Tell him twelve.
I would rather have more chances to talk than fewer.
Same. If I do it next Tuesday.
Yeah. All right, we'll, we'll plan on- Okay. Works for me. All right, thank you, everyone who attended tonight, and, uh, we are adjourned.